I'm Andy Gilman with the Agora Foundation and I want to welcome you to this candidate forum, which is hosted by Agora, the Ojai Valley News, and the Ojai Valley Chamber of Commerce. And Oak Grove donated this space, so I want to thank them for that as well. A few things to say. One thing I was hoping to do, if you saw the article in the paper on Friday, what I'm hoping to do is not have a lot of cheering, or booing, or applause in general, but that we are really looking at our candidates, who are all donating their time and donating their service, but that we think of them as eager candidates and we are hiring managers, so to speak. So I encourage you to listen carefully, pay attention, look for details, try to parse emotional response from concrete steps that they're going to take. So I hope that's what we can all do here today. And so, what I've said to all the candidates is, what we're going to do is we're going to kick it off with, they're going to introduce themselves, they can take a couple of minutes doing that, and then what is their vision for the future of Ojai? And what concrete steps are they going to take to implement that vision? So that'll be the first question going down the road. And then Laura and I will alternate asking questions, which you would expect. There are things like water, fire, housing, and so on. Now, what we've said to all the candidates is that we are going to, since we don't have a lot of time, what we want to do is ask different kinds of questions of different candidates in their districts. So not all the candidates will get all of the questions, but if they want to go back to a prior question, they can. So you might hear that. You might hear a candidate saying, "I want to respond to the other question about water or housing," or something like that. So they know they can do that, and they'll still stay within their two-minute timeframe. And let's see, Gloria, will you raise your hand there? Okay, so you see all you candidates, you see Gloria there with the placards. She's going to keep track of your time. So what we're going to do first is, Laura's going to kick it off with our first question. It's introducing yourself, and what's your vision for the future of Ojai? And then we will alternate with questions. But we can start down the row with District 1. But Laura, please, take it away.
I don't have that question, Andy.
The question is, what is your, introducing yourself, and what is your vision for the future of Ojai? And what are the concrete steps you would take to implement that vision? Most of us are just going to start with District 1 and move down.
Yes. So the signs along the front of the table, I don't know if you can see them. But the first spot here is District 1. Whoops, down one up. The first spot is District 1. And then it says, Michelle, next to that, Leslie, then District 2. And the three candidates in District 2, then District 3. The two candidates in District 3. And then the two mayoral candidates. Can you guys all see the white? Okay.
I have no idea what happened to.
It just went out. It wears on, and now it's not.
We have all the districts here.
Is yours on?
If you want to consult that map. Our sound guy's on.
Okay. They're on it. Until then, it's all that master's training. Check, check. Question, Andy, do you want to reiterate your vision for Ojai? Get your name. Oh, check, check. Hello. Nope. Michelle. Two minutes. Yeah, hers is bad.
Sorry, it's not my system. It's the schools. It's the schools, so it's a little tattered.
Sorry, Rocky, start.
There you go.
Go ahead, Andy, can you?
Go.
No, I mean, the question, because I only have the questions we're asking after the first question.
Of course, of course.
Check, check. All right.
Of course.
Oh, well, okay. Nope, nope. We had it through the middle. We did.
So Andy, I have to, I apologize. It's the school system, and I guess you.
Hello. Oh, hello, hello. Okay, hello. Hello. Okay. Michelle. Michelle, take it off.
Hello.
She gets extra points for starting from low, breaking the ice.
Hello. No. Okay. Oh, maybe. Hello. Okay. Hello, can everyone hear me? Thumbs up, okay. Hi. Okay. Hello, can you hear me? Can everyone hear me? All right. Well enough. Sure. Okay. Hi. Thank you so much to our hosts, and thank you so much to Oak Grove, which is actually my second time here today. My daughter goes to school over here, so I love Oak Grove. And I'm sure all of you know that this school was founded by Krishnamurti. Maybe you all know who he is. He's an amazing philosopher, writer, thinker. And so, in honor of him, I'd like to share a quote from Krishnamurti. When we talk about understanding, it certainly takes place only when the mind listens to you. The mind being your heart, your earth, your here, being here with your whole intention. My name is Michelle Pimero, and I'm running for City Council in District 1. I bring with me over a decade of grassroots organizing and experience. I have worked at both the municipal and national level as a campaign director at a national office. In 2014, I worked as a policy advisor for the Conventional Committee of Marketing in 33th District in Los Angeles. I built my marketing business from the ground up and have helped launch businesses right here in Ventura County. And in 2020, I founded Sustainable Ventura, a digital platform that has served as a beacon for storytelling and transformational conversations with local in Ventura counties who are committed to our monetary health. I have a full degree in journalism and political science at the Ohio State University, which I believe serves as a backbone for my dedication to research and creative journalism. In short, I have worked at grassroots level of business, policy, community development, understanding the complex role played in businesses and partnerships required to serve all communities towards the creation of a viable economy. But professional experience is only one part of this journey. I'd also like to share with you my business experience, and why I think it also matters. I am a first-generation college graduate throughout the interstate. The daughter of two immigrant parents. I have an intimate understanding of issues that everyday people face against living paycheck and nature, taking on student loans, and navigating times of economic instability because I have lived it. I have worked hard and had extraordinary fortune that I can live and work here in this beautiful community with my husband and my daughter. That is not a privilege that I take lightly. As a working mother and a person of color, I also have the experience of seeing Ojai from an intergenerational and diverse perspective. A perspective that with all due respect is currently lacking from our elected representatives. And it is with this fresh perspective, one infused in tenacity, passion, and pragmatism, that I intend to approach the many challenges facing Ojai and all of the decisions that I will be asked to make as a member of City Council. I promise to fully and carefully listen to all points of view, diligently pursue all potential solutions, and collaboratively work with my fellow council members. My vision for Ojai is one that prioritizes climate resiliency and the formal proactive and science-based responses to issues of increasing fire danger and water scarcity. It is an Ojai that considers sustainability not just for the next few years, but for the next generation. It is a vision that resonizes a community like an ecosystem and only thrives when it supports diversity and acknowledges that growth, while importance does have its limits. Thank you so much.
Okay. Next is Leslie Rule. We're working out.
Good evening. Thank you very much. I'm pleased to be the first to amplify. I'm for a livable Ojai. On the grandest scale, a livable Ojai is a community that cherishes and protects its people and its place, including the flora, the fauna, and the land. And in turn, that ecosystem nourishes the community. It's a relationship built on trust, respect, and reciprocity. There are three main issues that I want you to know are important to me. The first is the continuation of water security for our town. I intend to work diligently to ensure Ojai has the water that we need in the future. This is a large part of addressing the future of climate change now. Specifically, I intend to work towards water capture and recycling water whenever possible, especially on the part of large commercial users. The second is affordable housing. A livable Ojai provides affordable housing for people who serve their community. Our city workers, our teachers, our nurses, service workers, first responders. Our workforce should be able to find affordable housing and live here if they so choose. It is an untold benefit to those who serve the community that they live in the community. And then there are the 43% of us who are renters, who live with ongoing housing insecurity. That's a problem that must be solved. The first thing I would do is conduct an inventory of all city-owned land and the buildings on them. And then I would see where we meet the criteria for state funding. So remodel existing structures for affordable workforce and long-term residents. Finally, changing tourism from exploitative to contributing by developing eco-tourist activities that contribute to the culture of Ojai. At its heart, eco-tourism asks that visitors enrich the community by involvement in that community. By doing this, we have control over the growth of tourism and can prevent and can protect the people, the artists, the businesses, including our own town coffers that rely upon them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I forgot two really, really important things to say. It's okay if I interrupt. One is, the bathrooms are right over there. Second, what's going to happen, you've probably noticed that there are postcards on your chairs and pens, and those are for you to write down questions if something occurs to you in the course of our conversation. This fee will come about, at about 6:30 or so. Pick up those cards, and then Laura and I will ask those questions of the candidates. Thanks. Oh. That's an old district, though? Oh, sorry about that. So what needs to be said?
Our community is paying attention.
That's good.
Awesome.
Sorry about that.
Okay, next, can we move on to Rachel Lang? She's running in District 2.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'd like to lift it up. I'm Rachel Lang, and I just want to give you both a thank you for allowing us to platform and practice, to speak here tonight. Okay, is it on now? Okay, I'll just talk louder. So I think we can all agree that the pandemic was really difficult for many of us here. And for me in particular, it was challenging because I lost my baby daughter. Now, thank you. I'm the kind of person who looks for meaning and the gifts out of every situation. And so, I made a commitment at that time that if I couldn't be Stella's mom here on earth, then I would look into the eyes of every single child in this community. And I would see Stella in them, and I would work for them and do for them what I would want someone to do for Stella and what I would do for her if I had been able to be her mother. And so, for me, the vision for the future of Ojai is the vision that I would want to create for my daughter. And that is, we return to a culture of care and compassion. Care means that we respect the inherent and economic dignity of every single person in this community, and that we don't just sit idly by when our neighbors are being priced out of their homes and gentrification is a very real threat. It also means that we come together to create solutions that don't leave an environmental impact because care also extends to how we treat the planet. And climate is my top priority because I really care about the future that we're leaving our children, and in particular, being good stewards of our water resources, protecting ourselves against fires and the threats that come with climate change. Climate change is here, it's very real, and we need to be proactive. And so, I will work with the Climate Emergency Mobilization Committee and do everything I can to grow trees and to move our community away from fossil fuels. I have built a successful business over 17 years, bringing people together, collaborating, and leading with compassion. And that's what we need in our government because care starts there. We can't expect our community to come together to solve the problems that we face if we can't sit in the council room and come together, leaving our egos behind, and work toward sustainable solutions for our future. So thank you very much. I think that's my time.
Thank you, Rachel. Next, we have Catherine, Randy Haynes.
I guess it's on. Hi, I'm Randy Haynes. I'm the, what, next to Mayor Stitt? I'm going to be the last councilman standing if I win. I moved here 28 years ago. I came from the San Fernando Valley. You know, no matter how many times you come before a group of people and you want to talk about who you are, and what you are, and where you've been, and all of your accomplishments, you know, just a state of nervousness takes over. My hands are set, and I'm sitting here sweating to death. And I thought I'd need these for my forehead, and it looks like I need them for my hands. But, you know, I've been here 28 years. I coached high school football for 14 years. I sat on the, and chaired the Recreation and Parks Commission for eight years. And I've been on this council for eight years. And I've seen a lot of good things occur in this community, and I've seen a lot of bad things occur in this community. And when I say bad, bad is the divisiveness that has occurred over the last few years. And as a councilperson, it just saddens me that we can't come to a better understanding of how to solve a lot of these difficult but solvable problems that we face. How many of you last night watched the Ojai City Council meeting? So you're aware that instead of taking the opportunity to solve a problem, we took the opportunity to be divisive and to separate and to create two Ojais. Yeah, there you go. You know, the fear is, is some people, I get excited and I get loud. Some people are intimidated by it. I'm sorry if you are. Other people sense it as passion and see passion in it. And that's what I am. So, like I said, I think one of the things that we have to look at, and what you're going to find out, and if you observe City Council, and you just watch the politics of Ojai, we've got to figure out how to stop fighting one another and start coming together to solve our problems. And if there's anything I've noticed in eight years, instead of it getting better, it's gotten worse. And for all of us sitting up here, and all of us wanting to be a part in the future of this community, we need to recognize that it starts at home. It starts here. And you want to have, you have to have the ability, and you have to have the passion to reach out, to listen to, and hopefully, when you're in a debate or a discussion, that you can sway someone or two or three people on the council to think that your way is one of the better ways. And sometimes that's what's lacking. We just can't, it's never going to be 5-0, never going to, well, I've been on a lot of ends of 4-1. But you just have to understand, we're in this together. And through coaching, creating championships in this community, to watching Sarrazo di Master Plan be developed, and then watching it carefully be taken from Phase 1 to Phase 2 to Phase 3, to being able to negotiate with the county regarding Soul Park, which in 28 years, I haven't had one person come up to me and say, "Boy, I'm glad they charged me to go to a park that's in my community." You realize last night what we achieved, if it's passed by the county, that now we have a facility in our backyard. Thank you.
Awesome. Water Park's next. All right. Catherine. Catherine Donwin, also running in District 2.
Yes, thank you. You're right about these nerves, ma'am. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. Thank you to the Agora Foundation, Ojai Valley Chamber of Commerce, and Ojai Valley News for hosting this forum. And thank you for Oak Grove School for having us. My name is Catherine Donwin, and I am running for Ojai City Council, District 2. I was born and raised in Ojai, and now my husband and I are raising our family here. This town means a lot to me. I, along with many other residents, have noticed a shift in our town's priorities, and as a result, feel that our voices are not being heard, and our priorities and interests as residents are not being met. I chose to run for City Council for this reason, to be a voice and a representative for Ojai residents at large, not just for a select few. My vision for our community is to see tourism as a function of our economy, not our core identity or a focal point for long-term goals. To use the revenue that is generated by tourism and direct it back into our community in the form of youth programs and community events. Affordable housing needs to be addressed by looking at local job availability as well as physical housing supply. We can explore opportunities to develop currently vacant buildings for housing purposes. I will address our ongoing water crisis by encouraging and implementing infrastructural updates for water catchment and recycling. We need to continue to work with local environmentalists and conservation boards to identify a long-term plan. Overall, my vision focuses on our residents and what we value most about this value and our community. I want to see a greater focus on making our town more inclusive and an affordable place for families. Most importantly, as a civil servant, I take my responsibilities as a voice and representative of my district very seriously. Communication, transparency, accessibility in our local government is vital. We all want to see our community flourish, and I believe my vision can make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we move to District 3, where we hear from Andy Whitman.
Good evening, and thank you for our hosts for promoting tonight's forum. I'm very fortunate to have lived and known life for 53 years. My wife and I decided that this was the very best place to raise our family. My vision for the future is an Ojai that retains the characteristics of the town that I grew up in. Ojai is first and foremost a collection of neighborhoods, a place to live. While tourism is important to our financial survival, it's secondary to preserving our livable neighborhoods. Ojai looks and feels the way it does today because our past leaders planned for the future, and they realize that sometimes we must say no to preserve the Ojai we love. They live in another town within two hours of Los Angeles that can approach the sense of small-town embodied in Ojai. That's why the tourists flock here. My vision of Ojai preserves the unique small-town character and sense of community that I've benefited from for over five decades. I will fight for you to ensure your water rights are protected and that you have an adequate water supply. I will support common-sense decision and policymaking to preserve the quality of life for people who call Ojai their home. I will start by developing a specific plan and policies for our dwindling water resources, set policies to preserve our existing affordable housing, identify what we can do to mitigate the impacts of our visitors on our daily lives, and promote our use of clean energy. I have three adult kids, who I would like to see have the same opportunity to raise their families here in Ojai that I have. This is a critical election. Please vote, encourage your friends to vote. And if you want to keep Ojai, Ojai, please vote for me.
Thank you. Continuing on District 3 is Renee Roth.
Hello. Hello, can you hear? I'm Renee Roth. Hello, everybody. Thank you. We finally made it. COVID-free, we're here in the great outdoors of Ojai. It's exciting to see faces I know and people I know in the audience, so I'm glad you're all here. So what got me involved in Ojai politics? What got me involved to sitting for the City Council? I have to say that the Thomas Fire was a big wake-up call for me and my family because I realized that I was not prepared at all to leave. I didn't know what to take with me, and I didn't know where to go. And that was as a mother, and, you know, a family, and dogs, and kids, and what, I felt like I was just empty-handed, and I didn't know what to do. And that was one of the things that's prompting me to step up for our community, is to help with our fire preparedness, our emergency preparedness, and our ability to respond. Because I wasn't ready, and I have to admit that. And now, I'm really starting to realize that there are a lot more resources and things that we can do to plug in to our community that will help us be better prepared for the future. The other thing is our water issues. I was involved for six years with the development of the Ventura River Watershed Master Plan. And that plan had a group of stakeholders for six years who met and came up with information and data to document the flow of the rivers, the volume of the rivers, the issues and impairments that we have with our water supplies. And I saw people meet and discuss these issues in a cooperative way that resulted in projects being defined that are going to enhance our water supplies. And not only that, they, the information that was used was used to prepare grants that are currently being funded to do water supply enhancements for our watershed. So there were many different results of people working together cooperatively and getting good information on which to make decisions and prioritize how to move forward. I saw that in action. I was a part of that. It was very beneficial. I know that we have the resources and the capability to do that here today. I've seen a lot of divisiveness, and I would like to have people be able to come together and work together at the neighborhood level. I like that idea of getting neighborhoods involved. That our community is kind of divided in certain ways. And if, like, for example, the CERT training, we found out from Matt Laverre that there's going to be CERT training, and it's going to be down in Oakview. But what about if we had it in Ojai? And what if we had Ojai neighborhoods be grouped together for CERT training so that everybody could have some volunteers and step up at that CERT training that would be able to take that message back into their neighborhoods and their community? That's the kind of thing that I'm working for. That's the kind of thing I think is possible. But we need to step up and ask for it, and bring people together around those values. Thank you.
Next, we have our mayoral candidates. Anson Williams, why don't you start?
Is this what I can hear? All right. Hey, everybody. I have a very, very personal connection to Ojai, and that's why I'm running for mayor. The words I'm about to read were written more than 40 years ago by a man who's approaching the end of his life. And yet, all he could see was this beauty around him, this school he created. Though his words are, "The air is perfumed with orange blossom. The whole valley is filled with that scent, and the smell of it is in your mind, in your heart, in your whole body. And there's a quietness in the mountains, a dignity. And each time you look at those hills and high mountains, you are really surprised that such a country exists." His words. Well, that is a last journal entry by the great philosopher Krista Murdy. And that was the last. And every time I read those words, I'm reminded of how blessed we are to live in this valley and how obligated we are to make sure we pass down what we have to generations, generations that will follow us. I know how special this valley is, not from just what I've read, but what I've experienced. Ojai saved my life. I had colon cancer a few years ago, and there were serious complications from the surgery. About a month after the operation, I came back to my home in Ojai. I saw no future. I was a broken man. And that's when the magic happened, when the people in this town embraced me, helping me truly to heal. It wasn't, but it wasn't just the people. It was the place itself, the quietness in the mountains, the dignity that Krista Murdy talked about so eloquently. Well, I'm running for mayor. Mayor, I am. And it's time to make sure our kids, that's our future, are able to enjoy those mountains. That dignity is most definitely not a given. I can promise you this. Whatever challenges we face, and we will face many, the first thing I'll think about is our kids. They're the future of Ojai. That's my vision. That's the future. And our decisions today must give them the best possible tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello. May I get a second? I think we're out again. Let's see. Mayor Vansy Six, it's your turn. Hope you're working down there. You are. Good.
Thank you, Laura. Can you all hear me? Okay. Good evening, Ojai. Thank you so much to the Agora Foundation, to the Ojai Valley News, to the Chamber of Commerce for making this event possible. Also, thank you to Oak Grove School for hosting us on your beautiful and historic campus. Can't see me? I can stand up.
I'd love to.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, thank you. I'm known for plainly speaking the truth. I don't dance around the issues. Our biggest challenges are taking action on climate and water, keeping renters from being gentrified out of their homes, finding that sweet balance between quality of life and a vibrant tourist economy, and preparing our community to withstand wildfire and natural disasters. My vision for Ojai is that we can be a beacon of sustainability, equity, inclusion, community collaboration, and engagement. That is true prosperity. To implement this vision, we need to focus on values, specifically kindness, humility, civility, honesty, and collaboration. Acting in the world in accordance with our values is an act of love and personal responsibility. I chose in 2020 to run a 100% positive campaign, and I'm doing that again in 2022. Martin Luther King spoke of the need for a qualitative change in the soul. If we want a more civil society, then we ourselves must be civil. It begins right here. We need collaboration. That's been a major focus of my teaching career. I've trained in and taught communication, group dynamics, and conflict resolution. Bringing people together for the common good makes my heart sing. I have worked really hard as your mayor to make council meetings welcoming, civil, and democratic. Through shared values, Ojai can be the change that we want it to be, an environmentally conscious, sustainable, diverse, humane, and connected community. Go Ojai. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy.
You want to ask a question?
Okay. So, we will start down with our District One here by me. The first question I've got is, what is your view of the role of tourism in our community? And what would you do to change it, if anything? Did you hear? You got that? Okay. And that question will be for Michelle and for Leslie.
Hi. I think balance is the operative word here in how we need to approach tourism. And I think the balance also begins with shifting our perspective and how we view tourism in our city. For example, with the Bryant Street industrial area, I think we should rename that the Bryant Street Sustainability Incubator. How amazing would it be? It's a shift in perspective so that when you come into Ojai, when tourists come into Ojai, they leave with a sense of that place is doing it right. That place puts the citizens first, the environment first, and they leave inspired. And they come here with the purpose of preserving Ojai. So there needs to be a balance and a shift in perspective in the way that we approach tourism. It needs to be in line with our local and circular economy. And I also think that we need to make it work for us. I think it's time to ask staff to study if it's time to increase the TOT, our hotel tax. San Francisco's is up at 16.7%, I believe. I think Ojai should raise it up as high as 20%. I don't think anyone's not going to come here because they see that. If anything, it will be an incentive to come here mindfully and to treat Ojai with the respect that we deserve as a community. And then I believe that we should use that TOT, the increase in that TOT tax, to make it work and put it back directly into our community, not just for other programming that, again, serves tourism. It should service our roads. It should service our sustainability objectives. And I just, we need to really, just, again, change our perspective and bring balance into how we address tourism.
Okay. So for Leslie, I'm going to go ahead and repeat that. What is your view of the role of tourism in our community? And what would you do to change it, if anything?
So, when I think about tourism in Ojai, and I see it as exploitative, and I also see this possibility of turning that head from exploitative, excuse me, from exploitative to contributing. So I've been an ecotourist. And what that simply means is you go to a place and you involve yourself in the community in ways that benefit both the community and yourself. So, for instance, I was speaking with the folks from the Green Coalition who recently got a grant. And they are going to start, they're going to start developing, again, behind City Hall, an eco hub that will start with drought-tolerant planting and things like that. So, where this idea came from? I lived in Massachusetts, and I wanted to build a house. And I wanted to build a house with natural building materials. A straw bale house is what I wanted to build. So what I did was, I had a workshop, and people from all over Massachusetts and all over the country came there for a week to build my house because they wanted to learn how to build with natural materials. I have the same idea around ecotourism here. People who come into town, they can park their cars before they get into town. They can ride a bike. They can walk, as we do. We would have activities that they would want to know about. People want to know how to make their gardens drought-tolerant. They want to know how to catch rainwater. They want to know how to do gray water gardening. Those are the kinds of things that we could teach. We could also have people, when they're learning drought-tolerant gardens, to actually build a drought-tolerant garden for us in the back using the Green Coalition and all of their resources. So that's my idea, and it really is born of the fact that 30 people came to my place in Massachusetts and wanted to build my house to learn how to do it. Fabulous. And I would like to bring that idea to Ojai around ecotourism. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy, are you going to go to the next question?
Sure. This will be for District Two. It's a related question. We did a tourism panel in 2017, just prior to the Thomas Fire, if you remember that. And what we noticed in that work was how our economy in Ojai is so heavily slated towards service industry jobs. And even more, the traffic primarily was people driving into Ojai and leaving Ojai because they can't afford to live here. So that's a problem that we've been thinking about for a long time. So Randy, I'd like to start. Rachel, let me start with you. What are your thoughts about diversifying our economy in Ojai in general? And what kind of, how might you work to bring jobs here that would be high-paying for people who can afford to live here?
Such a great question. Well, first of all, I think let's look at our budget. Our budget involves, you know, $4.3 million, I believe it is, from the TOT, from that tax, and from tourism. But it's a certain kind of tourism that comes back into our community. And that are people who stay overnight and people who support our local businesses. So we have sales tax that comes from that as well. We also have property taxes. It's another big source of our income as well. One of the things that I think there's real potential for, and Nicole mentioned this, is looking at what we're doing with Bryant Circle. My friend Xena owns the Magic Hour Tea Company, and they have, it's a multimillion-dollar company with operations there. She pays people a good wage. It's a, she produces jobs for residents of this community. That is an area where we could develop, we could bring people in and actually go and recruit some businesses. Or we could do something like a co-op, where we are an incubator, as Nicole said, for new companies.
Michelle.
Oh, Michelle, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. Where we are an incubator for companies, for artists, for people who want to build high-income-paying jobs. That land is zoned for industrial use. So, you know, so if we build residences there, or we, you know, the noise is going to be a factor, anything that we bring into that area. I also think that, you know, we have a potential now with so many companies being virtual. Getting more businesses, more business owners into this area to set up operations here. So I think there's a lot of potential. But everything we do needs to be sustainable, and it needs to go back to that sense of are we caring for one another and creating opportunities for one another here?
Thank you. Randy, do you need Andy to give you the question again? It's about diversifying. Go ahead.
Yeah, diversifying our economy. You know, I, I've brought this up more than three or four last time. I bring it up all the time. We have to think about, we have to think about, we have to think about diversification. I can speak loud. We can, let's see him before. I'm just trying to, you know. You got the voice, man. You know. I just don't, I don't want to get excited here. Can you hear me now? Is that better? Start the clock over.
Oops, there it is.
Maybe it's the angle of the dangle. I don't. I know, wait. Be into it. Is that better? All right.
Let's talk about diversifying Ojai. We're not a light switch. Can't turn it on, can't turn it off. You got to put together a group of people, smart people. You got to study it. You got to think it through. You got organized. You got a plan. You got to get community buy-in. Let's take, for instance, what the community tried buying in at the school board property. We couldn't get anyone to agree what the plan was because we never had a plan. And if we had a plan, we had competing plans, and no one wanted to listen to the other person's plan. So what we need to do is bring it home, bring it back to the city council. We'll let them put together some form of an ad hoc committee or a standing committee, appoint, or put an application process out there. But let's bring as many people as we can who understand economics better than me and over half of this community, and let's make smart decisions. Let's not make decisions in haste. Let's make decisions that are thoughtful, careful, and well-thought-out. That's the first thing I would do with diversification. Was traffic a part of it?
No, he did use that word, "traffic," but it wasn't in the version I had.
What else? I said that a lot of the traffic are people coming in and out of Ojai, not tourists. So, you know, if you live in Ojai, you don't go downtown on the weekend. It was funny. I was talking to someone about this today. And if you do, you're crazy. So, and me, I drive through downtown on the weekend because I want to see what's going on. I want to feel the vibrancy. I want to see. And then I scratch my head and say, "What are they doing here? 99 degrees out, people walking around." It's like, if I was here, I'd be in my hotel. But we got to think of, when we think of tourists and we think of how much money it generates for our community. Let's not kid ourselves. Tourism paves our streets. Tourism sustains our parks. Tourism pretty much does anything and everything associated with a thriving Ojai. So if we want to, I'll close it up real quick. If we want to diversify, again, we got to start from the bottom up, and we've got to work together. And we've got to recognize what we have, what we need, and how we're going to get there.
Thank you. I thought the same question.
Okay, great. Diversification.
For Catherine.
So I think that, that can sometimes be a difficult question in the sense that job availability and housing are very closely tied together in our community. We can't just have more jobs and people not have a place to live because then you get the issue of people commuting here. We can't just have more homes and no place for those people to work. How are they going to afford those homes? So it really is kind of like a multi-layer issue, and it's a bit of a chicken-and-egg situation. What do you address first, housing or jobs? I think at this point, maybe housing, but there's so many current residents that are in need of housing. Will that solve the job availability? So we just really have to see where, I guess, where our priorities lie, what current businesses, some of our larger employers, where they have availabilities to look locally for their hires. I mean, I commuted to Thousand Oaks for 10 years to work. And my husband commuted to Camarillo, did commute to Santa Barbara. My parents commuted to Carpenteria for 20-plus years. So it's a problem, and we have to see what we can do and how our local businesses can do that. But it really takes a collaborative effort from a lot of people to make that happen. Our community has to buy in. The local government has to buy in. And it's not a simple fix. Those two things are so closely related, and we really just have to figure out which one is more important, which is a
which is a greater priority for us.
Thank you.
Maybe a quick announcement. So you have the postcards on your chairs there. So Misty's gonna come around. If you have a question that you would like to ask the candidates, go ahead and just hold up your question. Misty will gather those, group them, and then bring them up to Laura and myself. Also, we're not gonna be able to ask all the questions we would like. So we have built a discussion forum, which any questions that you send, we will post onto the forum. And the email is ojaichat@gmail.com. And all of the candidates will have access to that forum if they want to respond to those questions, they can. Thank you.
The next questions are for District Three. And we'll start with Renee, I guess. Go backwards. Renee, the question is, what specific local initiatives would you implement to encourage environmental sustainability for the city?
Yay. That's my favorite question. Thank you.
I didn't think it was fair, but.
So first off, if we talk about sustainability, I'm active, Dan. When we talk about sustainability, if I were to ask everybody here, what is sustainability? What does that mean to you? In my way of looking at things, first of all, we've neglected our earth. We've neglected our way of costing out and benefiting projects based on what is good for the earth. So it's time that we give back. We need to start looking at what can we do to be stewards of the earth and giving something back to the land that supports us. But we also are going to be growing and thriving and developing with jobs and incomes and housing. And if we can do those same things in a sustainable way, where we're using as little energy as possible, where we're recharging our water and using our water wisely and creating green space for every housing development that we would put in. If we would look at our energy consumption, our water consumption, and ways to use things in a meaningful way, and not just as a consumer, but looking at how much we are able to give back and contribute and use things more wisely and more efficiently, we'll have an opportunity to do things sustainably. One of the things I was fortunate to do is go up to Ashland, Oregon, where I grew up. And I was able to visit an area that was a big open field when I was a child. It had, used to have barns and horses. And that land has now been developed. And it's been developed into a community called Verde Village. Verde is Spanish for green. And back in 2007, my best friend, growing up in Ashland, Oregon, her father was a developer and a real estate agent. They got funding together, and they developed a community starting in 2007 that had zero energy demands. And back in 2007, zero energy was a new concept. They also are doing it with very low water use and very clean air and recharging groundwater. So I just want you to know, when I saw that community, I went, we can do that here. So that's what sustainability is to me.
Thank you. Andy?
I'm gonna jump over a little bit to some of the tourism questions while I'm answering. But in terms of the environment and sustainability, I think our most important should be the sustainability of our planet. I was contacted by the Climate Emergency Committee and asked to run because the three men on the city council had created exemptions to the committee's proposals for clean building standards for new construction. I believe that the science proves that we have entered a period of climate change, and we need a global campaign to reduce carbon emissions worldwide to the fullest extent possible. So I fully support the effort advanced by the Climate Committee, which promotes it all new construction. Ojai will be electric only. My opponent doesn't agree. She contends that we don't have an adequate supply of clean energy, but Ojai is part of the California Clean Energy Alliance, which assures that we receive only electricity from sources. Jumping back to issues about tourism. I think we have an opportunity to send a message very broadly. We have visited so extensive people from around. We should work with our tourism. So I think we should work with our tourism industry partners in the effort to send home with them. We need to first make a great example of what we can do here in this community to demonstrate that we can be clean, we can remove our dependence on fossil fuels, and communicate that to our visitors and have them take that home with them. The last thing I want to say is quickly about Bryant Circle. And I think either Rachel and Michelle talked about this. And that is, I was on the planning commission when the Bryant area was conceived, and it was adopted as part of our general plan. And at that time, the idea was that Bryant was very important to our ability to attract businesses. And a big part of that was that we needed to have a separate area. So if our businesses were smelly or noisy or created other disturbances for residents, there wouldn't be any residences around to complain. And of course, even with the separate area, the residences nearby, the residents who lived near Bryant were very upset. We kept hearing complaints from them about how that was being developed. I think it's very important that we not convert Bryant into a partial residential area if we hope to use that area to bring in jobs that people can afford to live in Ojai. Thank you.
So Andy? I would like to ask our mayoral candidates. Boy, I have like ten questions to ask you, but let me stick with. I know. Clearly, we're facing a housing crisis. Anybody who looks on Facebook sees how many people are looking for places to rent. And the price is dramatically higher than it was even just three years ago. So my question to both of you is, how do you think about this housing crisis? And what steps might you take to have Ojai be a more sustainable place?
Thank you. Great question. Huge issue, clearly, in Ojai. I hear stories every day about people getting gentrified out of their homes. And so we need to do something about this. We have an ever increasing problem of housing equity. And so we must seek solutions that solve the equity issue. If you're going to build anything new in Ojai, it has to be for the people who need it the most. And we have to focus on that, making sure anything new that is built is sustainable, environmentally conscious, and community friendly. There's a misguided belief that any kind of new development is good. That's not true. This often leads to false solutions for speculative real estate developments. And that does nothing or very little for the people who really need it. So, and sometimes the development agreements displace people because these people are in the way of the development. So tonight, I'm gonna offer four real solutions. Two of them are actually really happening right here in Ojai right now. Number one is home sharing. A local nonprofit has introduced this concept, and it's a concept that's been around. Now we're doing it right here in Ojai. And so it's a new program that will match people who own homes with people who would be interested in renting a room. And it's a very secure system. People are vetted and matched. So it's a symbiotic relationship, so we can share what we have. The second real solution that's happening right now is the Ojai Home Preservation Trust. That's already being put forward by a local nonprofit. So this group will seek donations from state and federal funding and also private donors. And they will be buying existent low-income housing in our community. So there are lots of little apartment buildings, if you walk around. And they will buy those buildings and stabilize it so the people can actually stay in there. The idea is that we save what we have. And then two options that the community, that the city council can do, just we can amend the ordnance on tiny home paths. We can rent stabilize them so you wouldn't have to pay as much. That would lower the price. We could also shrink the size of ADUs. So if, for example, we could pass an ordinance so they could be eight hundred feet, and that would also lower the rent. So I'm offering you four real solutions. Of course, there are many others. And we must continue to face this issue because it's huge. And we want to keep the fabric of our community intact. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anthony? I'm sorry. First of all, affordable housing is incredibly complex. And I've talked to numerous California mayors, the tourists, tourist communities, and what they're going through. If people want to rent their rooms, they'll rent their room. We're not gonna be buying up apartments. We don't even have any idea of what we need in this community. How much workforce do we need? How much senior living do we need? We don't even have, we need to get that done. And we need to create a public housing commission to study our needs. You know? I don't know. There's a lot of possible solutions, the public housing trust, the general government subsidies, cities, private funding, and all that. And right now, I'm trying to set up a call with Marsha Fudge, who's the Secretary of HUD. Because, you know, with the inflation reduction act that's been passed, there's billions of dollars there for affordable housing. But every city, every state, they're out there looking for it. And I just want to find out more information and see how can we be first in line. And also, I spoke with Debbie Rutter, who's the Half Moon Bay Mayor. She's going through three situations now for affordable housing. Two are somewhat problematic. The one that's not is affordable housing on their school campuses. They're getting workforce housing on the school campuses for teachers and everything else they need for their system. So what I'm saying is, we need to study this. It's complicated. Buying some apartment buildings and having some, rent some room is not going to make it. I think right now, what are they, six hundred and ninety, actually, individuals in poverty in the Ojai area. And that would be twenty-six percent of the houses in our community they would need for a room. Anyway, if I'm here, we're gonna put together a commission. We're gonna get the facts. And we're gonna find out what we need. And believe me, we're gonna get out there, get first in line, and we're gonna do it. But it's not just buying up apartment buildings or renting some room. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Reading these exciting questions. But we had one more we wanted to, I wanted to ask. So we'll start with Leslie this time and ask, sorry, what is your approach for preparing for the next wildland fire in our community?
Thank you. Thank you for that question. If you don't mind, I'm actually going to go back to the affordable housing question because I have a lot of experience with building affordable housing. I have built three ADUs, so I understand that process. I also, when I moved to Ojai and bought my house, it had an unpermitted ADU. And I went through the compliance program. And within, I mean, it was so easy. And within two weeks, I had a certificate of occupancy. So first of all, ADUs can be anywhere from two hundred square feet to twelve hundred square feet, okay? On the Ventura County website, there are pre-approved plans. Daily, things are coming off of Governor Newsom's desk to make affordable housing easier. The most recent was taking away the need for parking. That had been done for ADUs already, but now it's done for all new building. So I see that as our immediate, short-term solution. It's build ADUs. It also allows income producing for those people who have property, have probably paid off a good part of their mortgage, but aren't really getting an income. So if you build an ADU, you can have an income. There are nonprofits who will build it, and then you can have a deed restricted. I personally believe, like, I built, the ADU I built in Northern California, I rented to my friend who was a school teacher. And, you know, I didn't need to make top dollar. But my friend and a school teacher needed a place to live. The second thing that I will say is, so I think ADUs are a short-term solution. They're by right. In other words, they're ministerial. They have to be approved. If they're not approved within, if your permit doesn't come back within sixty days, you are de facto approved. So if we could get funding to help people build this, that would be really a quick way to get a lot of housing up and moving. And finally, I'll just say, long-term, we need to really talk about land trusts and trust funds and figuring out ways to build it and deed restrict it for affordable for a long term. Thank you.
Sounds good. We'll stick with the same question about fire and see where it goes. The question is, what is your approach? What would be your approach to preparing for the next wildland fire in our community?
I will answer that, but I do very quickly want to touch on affordable housing as well.
It's okay.
It's an issue that affects all of us. As I said, my daughter goes to school here. I have a lot of friends at Oak Grove. And you know what? I don't see a single one here. And you know why? Because they don't, oh, wait, hi. Hi. Hi, okay. One, you know why? Because they don't have childcare. And you know why they don't have childcare? Because there's no affordable housing here. So I think instead of, it's a really contentious subject, and we get to pro-development or anti-development. But what I really urge everyone to think about is what do you want this community to look like? And let's work backwards from there. Who do you want to see here? How is it that we are going to function? Who is working the retail and our restaurants and helping us taking care of our children and comprises this vital, vibrant community? So let's think about that first and let go of the contentious development discussion and just think, who do you want to see here? In terms of fire, I just want to take a moment to recognize the hard work that our current city council has put into this. We have an amazing liaison from the fire department, Brian Brennan, Chris Dance at the Fire Safety Council. Everyone has worked really, really, really hard to put together a multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. I was at the last two council meetings ago. And it's an amazing, extensive, comprehensive plan that is really dense and not accessible. So I would like to condense that information, find out how to get it to community members, provide it in more than just one language, by the way. Because let's talk about accessibility. There are people on my block that speak Spanish. They are voting members of this community. They are in this community paying taxes. They deserve to know what's going on. We need to make sure that everybody knows their point of, their temporary evacuation point. I quizzed three of my friends. None of them knew it was Nordoff. So we need to get that information out there and accessible.
Okay, so this is gonna be for District Two. Here's a question from the audience, and I'll start with Rachel. At what point should all residential and commercial development completely stop for good? We live in a valley, it's a bowl. Do we build until it overflows? Question.
That is such a good question. And all over the Western U.S., we're asking that same question because we are in an extended drought, the worst that we've seen in twelve hundred years. And so our water reservoirs are... And so our water reservoirs are dwindling. And even if we should get a rainfall, or if our conservation efforts are working and we are refilling our aquifers and replenishing our reservoirs, we still face the threat of climate change, and that's not going away. And so I think development is one of those really complicated things. We all live here, we all love this community, we want to see this community thrive and grow. But at the same time, cities like Salt Lake City are asking the same questions. Big cities are asking the same questions. And so I think, I think we could delay development, at least until we have a better sense of where we're going to be. Lake Casitas is projected to be out of water in four years. This is a real problem. If we continue to develop and build, then we're using resources, we are not protecting our water for future generations. We're not being stewards for future generations. I think that we need to come together to really create a plan, a sustainable plan for how we move forward. Also, one thing I want to say about housing real quickly is, you know, we've talked a lot about building houses, but I think we need to address housing in terms of what happens when people are facing eviction. And I think, you know, we need a crisis response team put in place, working with Health of Ojai, working with the family shelter, Ojai Valley Family Shelter. We need to be able to mitigate those risks when someone is running out of funding for their, or money for their homes. We need to be on the front lines, helping them find solutions and sheltering them, caring for each other.
Thank you. So with these questions, are we doing the same ones with the three?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah. What was the question? The question is, when do we stop building in Ojai? At what point are we overforced?
I think...
Let me read it exactly.
No, it's okay. No, no, that's okay. When do we stop building? I think the question is, when do we start building? Because if you really take a look at the history of Ojai, and again, it's always interesting when I hear the word gentrification. It's interesting when I hear the word gentrification, but I think we've created this imbalance ourselves, past citizens of this community and today's citizens of this community. Let's think about the fact that we've built in the last 20 years 12 homes in Ojai. 12. So when someone asks me, when do we stop? I don't think we ever start. So, and I don't want to, I don't want to think, I don't want you guys to think I'm being sly about this or that. I don't care about it. But the reality is, a community like ours needs to create balance. And the only homes that are being built today are mansions. The only people coming to Ojai to build are people that can afford to build 35, 45, 5,500 square foot homes. So when we start talking affordable housing in this community, one of the things that we need to look at, there's, let's say there's 7,500 people that live in our community. I'm going to round it up and say there's 3,500 of those people that actually rent. Do you realize that when we looked at affordable housing the other night, and we talked about $3,500 medium threshold, $2,500 medium threshold, and then we were talking about the very low, which is what the fight was over, the eight people that are making probably $30,000, $40,000 a year? That was the fight. But the reality is, the fight in this community has to be, what type of, what type of community do we want to be and who do we want to support? And I'm going to tell you, the middle class right now in this community is getting ran out of town. We are not building, if we do build at all, for anyone making less than $100,000 a year. So when you do the math, think about this. If someone's paying $3,500 a month and they're making, let's say, $100,000 a year, they need to generate roughly $8,000 a month in income, right? They're spending 3,500 of it just on rent. How do they then save to be a first-time owner? Well, they're not going to be a first-time owner in Ojai. They can't afford it, okay? They can't afford it today, and they're not going to afford it tomorrow. So I'll wrap it up real quick here, because everyone else seems to be extending our little limit here, but...
Maybe we should move it to a minute.
So I'm just, you're right. I'm just trying to say, let's think about affordability in this community in a different way. And let's not think about the fact that when someone says, we need affordable housing, to run out in a panic and say, oh, my God, the sky is falling. Let's ask, what do you mean? And how do you plan to achieve it? That's what we need to ask ourselves.
Thank you. Anthony?
Yeah, I actually agree with a lot of what Randy is saying regarding the current available homes. Because a lot of, like, a neighborhood that I grew up in, which is kind of like some of the older planned neighborhoods, where all the homes are kind of the same layout, just in reverse. And those homes are so expensive right now, and families can't afford to live here. So, you know, what do we really want? Do we want, do we want to see more single-family homes? Do we want to see apartment complexes? I mean, like, what do we need? What do we want to see? We also have to keep in mind that any land that we develop over can also impact our watershed and the recharging of our basins and encourage water-in-force storm drains versus into our basins. So we just, we have to keep a lot of those things in mind. And I think that's one of the most difficult things, because everyone wants to see the results. Everyone wants to see housing now. Everyone wants to see the prices going down now, but it takes time. And we really all do have to work together and prioritize. I think that's the big thing. Balance and prioritization are very important, and we need to take these into consideration. So, I mean, I don't want to see, I don't want to see every one of our open fields developed over, but we have to find some kind of middle ground. We need something. Because people can't live here, there's not enough supply. People are buying up, I like to call them weekend warriors. We have a lot of people who buy residential homes and only come on the weekends. I mean, that's a home for a family. And those are, at this point, some of our more affordable homes, which are still in, like, the $900,000-plus dollars in residential neighborhoods. We're not even talking to them.
Thank you. Moving on to District Three, another housing, we've got a few housing questions. Would you, would you consider subsidizing housing, Andy, for educators and for first responders?
Well, so subsidizing housing involves taxes on the community, and so if we were going to consider that, it would basically have to be a referendum or election issue for the entire community to decide whether they wanted to pay for subsidies for housing. I would certainly have an open mind towards that, but I would have a lot of concerns about how that would impact the financial viability of the city if we, as a little four-square-mile unit, take on what is essentially a regional housing problem. I think, you know, we have good ways of addressing issues. I think that my, I think a great way to address housing, especially for teachers and first responders, is that we relax some of the rules about temporary housing, like tiny houses and trailers, and allow a temporary placement on places where there's land, like our school properties, and potentially our fire properties, police property, and various city properties. And if we did it in a temporary way, where we decided, you know, this isn't really working, we can move those trailers off. But I think there's a lot of potential for easing into that type of a housing approach. And I also agree with Leslie that accessory dwelling units are probably as far as a quick solution. It's one of the best that we have in terms of new housing, and I believe that that will receive the least amount of resistance from the community if you're looking at building new housing.
Thank you so much. Renee, the same question. Would you consider subsidizing housing for teachers and first responders?
Well, first of all, I am totally in support of the idea of workforce housing. Our two biggest employers, the Ojai Valley Inn and the School District, need to seriously be considering where and how they can go about doing it and getting the funding to do it. I was recently at a meeting last week with people from the Ojai Valley Inn, who are three people, actually. One from the corporate office in Chicago and two people from the local office, who are working on their sustainability plan. I was pleasantly surprised to see them at this meeting, where we were talking about how we can reduce our water use. They are taking very aggressive steps to try to reduce their water use and do things more sustainably. I think if there was dialogue, if there was incentives, if there was encouragement on ways to do this, and we would help with trying to help with the financing, the affordability, it definitely would be a win-win for our community and for the people who work here, so that they could live in the community that they work in. I think that's a really important thing. I don't think we're talking about big, single-family homes that they're needing. I don't think that at all. I think the ability to downsize and have 800 square feet is something that makes it more affordable, and I think people are willing to look at those options. I also agree that ADUs are critical. If we look at the housing stock we have now, over 80% of the houses in Ojai are single-family homes. That means many of them have big yards. Many of them, as I'm walking the neighborhood of District Three, I'm going, wow, there's room for an ADU over there. Wow, they have a great big yard, they've let it all go brown, there's nothing there. Wow, they could put in an ADU. Why doesn't the city have pre-approved plans for 600 square feet of accessory dwelling unit and start encouraging people to start doing that? Especially when we have over 35% of the people who are single-family homeowners. There is one person in the home. 35% of our families. So there's lots of opportunities for growth and development for housing in Ojai. We just need to start looking at how we can go about it.
Thank you. Andy, you have one for the next?
One too.
I'm going to give you a question that has been on my mind for a long time, which is, when you see the Ojai Unified School District enrollment starting from 2000, you see this precipitous drop that we're still facing.
Yes.
And so the question that I want to ask you both is, I guess it's a two-part question. One is, how do you see the city's relationship or involvement working with the school district? And secondly, it's such a complicated issue that we're at about 40%, based on whichever number you want to think about, enrollment in OUSE. And of course, that goes way beyond the city's limits, of course. But our community, the median age of our community went from, like, 37 to 54. And so we're, yeah, we're aging now. And so how do you see this issue? What do you think about the future of Ojai? And again, the city's involvement with OUSE.
Thanks for that question. Enrollment's down half in the last 10 years. And that's because, truly, people are moving out, there's less families, and honestly, the only way you can control that is bringing in a balanced community. I know when I grew up, started in East Los Angeles, in Burbank, when I even grew up in Burbank, back then it was very cheap. And my dad, you know, World War II, you know, soldier, GI loan, all that. And we all had a house. Everyone had a house. And there was kind of the lower-middle class, that was us, middle class, and then richer. But there was, there were all these areas for diversity and collaboration. We all went to the same school, we all went to the same parks. We don't have that here. We don't have that diversity, we don't have those options anymore. So it's a really difficult question. But so as far as how do we get more students there? That is a long conversation. And I have a lot of ideas of how to do that. It's very entrepreneurial, but I can't say, no time to do that now. But I'll tell you this, the one thing that really upsets me, our schools, that's the center of a community, our kids. I know when I went to school, that is the city. How come? Again, with the school board. What are these egos? What the heck? Don't our kids come first? What is this division between the council and the school board? Stop it! We need leadership. We need to come together. The greater good is our children. There's so much we can do if we just get together and, like, you know, stop, stop the egos, stop the unnecessary division, and work with each other for our children. We can do so much together. And the thing is too, I mean, we talk about, like Andy was saying, building this and that. We have nothing to do, we can't tell the schools what to do. We're not, we don't have that jurisdiction. We don't have that control. We need to be friends. We need to have collaboration, and we need leadership that brings people damn well together. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Stitt?
So this is, is it working? Okay. So this is a subject very close to my heart. As a lifelong teacher, I know that a community is only as strong as its public school system. And it's, as we've all said, it's a very complicated issue. People are being gentrified out of their homes. They can't afford to live here. These are families with children. And as has been said, the average age here is now 53. So there's not too much we can do about that. I've worked closely with our wonderful school superintendent, Tiffany Morse. She, on a few different projects. I've also worked with a leadership class at NOROFF High School. And in terms of collaboration, yes, it's all about relationships. So looking forward, I will continue to do this. And one solution that I'd like to look into, into the future, is to partner with Ojai Unified and grow the district's emotional wellness and peer support programs, which is my area of expertise as an educator. And this is what the really, the kids need right now. Emotional literacy, relationships, mental health, and self-knowledge. So I'd like to focus on that. And since I have some extra time, and we already asked about fire, I'd like to say a few words about fire because that is so important. In terms of fire readiness, our personal readiness is the most important. And my son and my mother and I learned the hard way when we evacuated to close the windows securely, keep the tank filled, have a litter box with us. And many people learned much harsher lessons. So according to, according to the Ventura County Fire Department experts, while first responders come immediately, it takes about 6 to 18 hours for regional firefighters to mobilize and begin protecting at community scale. So what makes the difference? Personal readiness. We are all responsible. And what's the most common reason that homes catch on fire? Flying embers. So the most two important things that we need to do, maintain a five-foot defensive So the most two important things that we need to do, maintain a five-foot defensive space around all of our homes, and also make sure there are no opportunities for flying embers to enter the home. Thomas Fire caused a lot of lessons. There are no boundaries in terms of fire, and every fire-resistant home is another home that firefighters don't need to risk their lives to defend. So I'm so happy that we now have a disaster evacuation plan. We worked really hard with City Manager James Vega, who's outstanding, we are so lucky to have him, circled the wagon, got all the entities and stakeholders to weigh in. And so please stay tuned for more information about that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, it's time to get to more serious issues, really. The ATP project. Sorry, that was a joke, but, anyway, the question is for District 1, I think is good for them to answer it. ATP project means active transportation project, and it does have a reach through the city, not just over by the high school. But that's where the dust-up is right now. So people want to know, where do you stand? And what would you do about it? And what are we all supposed to think? Michelle, help us out.
I want to answer that too, but I want to go back to the water because I too, I know, I was at the localizing California, California's Water Workshop at the inn, and I was actually really disappointed at what little they were doing to conserve water. They're doing great things with arindo removal and creating pollinator gardens and, you know, getting rid of the eucalyptus. But I think it's mutually beneficial to us as a city to revisit discussions with the inn and apply pressure for them to recycle water in the inn, not just the golf course. The IPCC reports are very, very clear, we have seven years to avoid the worst of climate change and its effects on us, so the time to act is now. And they are considering to consider water recycling efforts in 2045. We don't have that time. ATP. So as I said, my daughter goes to school here, I live on North Fulton, I am on my cargo bike, coming over here on that bike path. I think, you know, I hear a lot about congestion and traffic. I think, oh no! Okay, I'm in support of it. Any way that we can reduce our emissions and become less reliant on cars, I am all for. Thank you.
Leslie, the ATP project?
Can I talk about affordable housing? I'm kidding. But by the way, there are pre-approved ADU plans on Ventura County website. Boom, permitted. So actually, I think that this kind of also can be conflated with environmental sustainability, which just simply means that while we meet our needs in the present, we're not compromising the needs or the land for the future. So, you know, I support, I support bike riding. I support getting out of your car. My district is Blanche, well, Blanche to Shady Lane, Ojai Ave to Grand. It is walkable, it is bikable. We have people, you know, all modes of transportation, foot, skateboard, you know, skateboarders, scooters, you know, you name it, and they go by. But, but, you know, mostly, what I think is wonderful is we have parents' strollers with their kids. So they'll have a kid in a stroller, and then they'll have a kid on a bike. And so they are living this sort of environmental sustainability, and I think that what we need to do is make this the norm. It is the norm, not only for Ojaians, but also for the people that come into Ojai. Park your car, take a walk, ride a bike, hop on the trolley. So I am, I am in support of the ATP project. I am in support of, last night at the council, they talked about making the bike trail all the way out to Soul Park. Anything that we can do. But I will say, it's hecka dangerous. You know, I sit on my bike, and I'm like, I go down the streets where the light signals are, because, you know, so I think there's a safety issue around it too, but 100% in support of it. And I have talked to some of my potential constituents, but right now just my neighbors, and some aren't. You know, some want the old Ojai, and they don't want to lose a lane on Maricopa Highway in front of Noroff. But in my experience, there is no congestion there. You know, I drive it and bike it, and there's no congestion there. That sort of rumor has come to naught. Thank you.
Andy Whitman?
Perhaps this will be the last question, but let me start with Rachel. What do you think will be the most difficult goal you'll strive to achieve?
I think, I, I think the most difficult goal is really about changing the culture of this community. And about the council, changing the culture of the council. And moving it from, you know, oppositional thinking, from paying more attention to our differences than we pay to what's important for us to come together and what's important for the community. I think that's, that's one, one aspect of it. I also think it's part of a bigger shift that's taking place right now within our culture, which is that we really are at a transitional point where we are learning with the effects of climate, with where we are in the world, that we can't leave anybody behind. And so, with that in mind, when we're talking about fire, when we're talking about, when we're talking about climate, you know, when we're talking about housing, the people who are affected by these things are the people who have the most to lose. And so every decision that we need to be making is, how do we protect those people? How do we create plans for people who don't speak the same language? You know, for explaining to them, communicating to them, how to, how to protect their homes? How to manage an earthquake, a fire, or a flood? It has happened in the past. And so I think that really, my goal in running is, is to be a part of that change, to be a part of moving toward more of a compassionate model of leadership. And within that, creating real actionable plans. So we're not just doing performative measures. We are working together to meet the needs of our community and come up with some solutions.
Great question. What do you want to do, Andy?
Yeah, ready, please.
Look at, it's working great, you know. So I just want to cover a couple of quick facts, and then I'll get to the question. The city council in 2012 and 2013 had before them workforce housing from the Ojai Valley Inn, and they shut it down. So I just want to be clear on that, the inn had, had tried in the past, and the inn again is going to be working on workforce housing. I just had a couple notes here. The county of Santa Barbara and the county of Los Angeles both have pre-approved ADU plans. And the county of Ventura, VCOOG, Ventura County Organization of Governments, which I sit on, we're working on right now, we have a grant, and we're actually writing our own set of pre-approved ADU plans for the county of Ventura. Similar to city of Los Angeles, very similar to Santa Barbara's. I'm not going to get into housing, and I'm surely not going to touch ATP. I think all of you know where I stand on that, so. But I will say this, and I've said it for many years, I'm not against riding bikes, I'm not against bicycle lanes. I just think it's important how we do it. The emphasis that I've put on ATP quickly is the downtown corridor and how unsafe it is, and making the leisurely bike ride on the 33, because that's about what it is, that should be secondary. And the question is, what's, what is, what's the, what is it, Laura?
What's the what?
The question was, what do you think the most difficult thing will be for you to achieve?
I said I wasn't going to touch on affordable housing, but that's what it is. We have got to figure out how to remove the inequities of housing in this community. When I bought a house 28 years ago here, and today that house, I bought that house, I'll be, I'll be cleared $225,000 28 years ago. The house across the street sold six months ago for $1.5 million. I'm sorry, that's what I'm saying, I look at housing entirely different than most people, and I look at affordable housing from an entirely, I believe, lens. We have, on one side of our mouth, we talk about people that were asking to commute to come into Ojai and work. So think about that, they're getting up at 7:00, they're driving into town, they work an eight-hour day, they go home. How do they have any opportunity to be with their family? To sit down at the dinner table like we do? And to be able to participate with their children in their education? We need workforce housing, and we need affordable housing in this community. It's that simple. And we need to figure out how to do that together. So this came before us many years ago, and it was shot down. It's before us now, and we're having a big argument over it. And my gut says, unless the developer does something incredibly spectacularly well, we're going to lose this opportunity, and we'll have no one, no one to blame but ourselves. Because there is an opportunity to work through this, we just need to figure out how to do it together. So affordable housing is going to be, and if I'm elected, I will be a pit bull when it comes to ensuring that that is talked about, if not at every council meeting, at every other council meeting.
I'd like to talk about the ATP. I don't like it in its current iteration for a couple reasons. People talk about congestion, and it is true, it might be at specified times, but it is at the start of school and the end of school. And as much as we want to think, and many, and many students do ride their bikes, and I know other community members ride their bikes, but if we're thinking about the, the population that accesses that area on a daily basis for a large portion of the year, it's students, and those students are so excited to get their driver's licenses. And they're driving around there, and they're doing their best. And even some of the other people, I've literally seen someone driving down the bike lane in their vehicle. So I love the idea of having bike accessibility, and we need that, and that's great, but we need to do it in a way that understands what our traffic patterns are. I dropped my, I dropped my children off for several years now at the preschool, and it's a problem, just getting in and out. And it does get busy, and it can be dangerous, so that's something that maybe just needs to be revised and rethought. Do you need parking, that much parking, as well as a bike lane? It's a lot of things to discuss. But that's my thought on that. And then probably the most difficult thing will be the housing. It is just so hard. The affordability of housing, the supply of housing, who is purchasing these homes? Can we even mitigate, you know, what can we do to ensure, I guess to some extent, that who, who is purchasing these homes or who is living here that is contributing to our community and not just here in passing? I think that's going to be really important.
All right, the pin is down.
Actually, so with our last just few minutes, what I would like to propose is, maybe starting with Betsy, 60 seconds, everybody say one last thing that you would like your constituents to know about yourself. So Gloria, if you would, yeah, 60 seconds, please. Yes. Parting words.
Yep. 60-second closing remarks is what we're giving up for.
Well, I'd like to close with what a new council majority could do. We could immediately implement climate action recommended by our town's Emergency Climate Action Committee. We could deny approval of developments that displaced Ojai families from their homes. We could adequately fund road paving in our town. We could secure state and federal funds for climate science water supply study. We could cool our town by planting more native water and fire-wise trees. We could direct staff to actively seek state and federal funding to increase use of gray water. We could enact a vacation home tax. We could adopt an earth-friendly management policy which would ban pesticides on city property. We could establish wildlife corridors for our wildlife. We could enact an ordinance limiting the rent on tiny home pads. We could enact a living wage ordinance. We could pass a local law that phases out single-use plastics. We could update and improve our tree ordinance. We could do a lot. So thank you so much for having me, thank you for listening, thank you for caring so much about our beautiful community and cherishing it, and we truly are all connected. So I really appreciate your being here and caring so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Quickly, I want to go back to the fire. I really admire what our mayor has done so far, but there's one thing that we really need to put into that fire plan. No one's coordinating with the hotels. There's no connection or collaboration. And if there is a fire, if it's on a weekend, there's going to be many more tourists than residents, and you don't want panic. We need to have, we need, we need to have the Ojai Valley Inn, every other, every other hotel, every hotel room together so we have a plan that's coordinated, and which will stop unnecessary catastrophic situations. You don't want scared tourists running around. Anyway, thank you so much for the opportunity here tonight, I wish we had more questions. But Ojai is an affection point in its history, and honestly, we've never faced so many serious problems at one time. Drop, you have climate change, lack of affordability, unbridled tourism. At times like this call for a change in leadership, there are a lot of words, I don't know how much has gotten done. My background is an entrepreneur, director, and public servant on nationwide scale, have prepared me to face our challenges head-on and get things done. And that's what I've done in my life. I get it done. And that takes collaboration with the council, collaboration with the community, and I'm here to collaborate. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Renee Ross?
Yeah, my, my parting words are, you know, I've heard the wake-up call, and I think a lot of the community has also, about our climate resiliency challenges. And in my mind, the biggest challenge is going to be how we can step up and provide information and resources to the people who live in our community and the visitors to our community. I like the idea of ecotourism, but I like even more the idea of having an eco-park downtown Ojai in the Stewart Canyon area, the middle Stewart Canyon area, that has been given $680,000 as a renovation project to take out the eucalyptus trees and put in native plants and gardens. If we could create solar and tiny home demonstrations that model how we can harden our homes and have neighborhoods come to workshops where everybody learns how to do that, I think we can all participate and be part of the change that's needed to bring about a more resilient community.
Thank you so much. Andy Whitman?
So Ojai is an amazing place to live, and it isn't amazing by accident. We owe a tremendous debt of gratitude to the visionaries that came before us and fought to consistently preserve our Ojai. Ojai's at a crossroads, there's pressure to sell out, ignore that our water supply is shrinking, and grow beyond our means. If we do that, we will become what our visitors are fleeing from when they come to us to visit. We need elected officials who understand our history and who can make informed decisions to keep Ojai livable. As a lifelong resident, former Ojai Planning Commissioner, trained mediator, and defender of Ojai's water rights, I'm the I'm the most experienced candidate running in District 3. I understand how difficult it is to preserve Ojai's character. I'm running because I have the knowledge, skill, community experience needed to defend Ojai and leave a better Ojai for generations to come.
Thank you. Catherine Samuel?
I loved growing up here. I was born and raised, went to Topatopa, Matulaha, Nordoff. My kids are at Topatopa right now. And I want to continue to see that. I want to continue to see a community that values their youth and their families as well and provides opportunities. I really want to... I know our rec. department does a great job offering opportunities there. But I really want to see some that might be a little more accessible for families. I think we have some great opportunities in environmental sustainability for even some electric options for transportation that we can look into. And most importantly, I really want to be a voice of the residents who live here and what we need and what we want and what we want to see for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy?
So I want to start out first by thanking all of the candidates that are running. I don't think there's a bad one at this dais tonight. I think I've heard nothing but great ideas. I've heard a tremendous amount of compassion. And I feel that everyone here has the best interest of this community at heart. So I want to thank all of you. If I don't ever see you on the street, or I don't have the opportunity to dine with you, or any of that, I just want to say thank you for standing up and wanting to be a part of this. I also made it clear to the two women next to me in District 3 that there's no loser here, that whoever wins, the other two are going to support 100%. This is not about who I'm going to beat and how I'm going to beat them down. I just don't agree with that, and neither do they. We are here to represent District 3 and to be the best possible candidate.
District 2. We've read District 2.
There's three of us, so... District 2, so thank you, Laura.
Just trying to confuse you.
But that's what I'm saying is, I've been on this council for eight years, and I have seen a lot of good things. The very first thing I voted on was complete streets. I spent three years with the Native Americans, Indians, developing a plan that restored dignity to the earth from their perspective. I've watched so many good things happen in this community. And again, like I started out with, but I'm seeing divisiveness. And I just would like, if we can figure out how to come to the table together... And again, I have a six-year-old and a four-year-old granddaughter. I think the world of them, and I think the world of this community. And I too want to see what we can do to sustain what we have and to make it better for them in the future.
Great, thank you.
I want to start by just sharing Randy's sentiments. We have such an incredible community, and I think we can see a representation of that right up here. And I told Randy and Catherine that regardless of who wins this election, I am in this. I want to serve. And that's the whole reason why I'm here. I've had the pleasure and privilege of working with some of the leading experts in regenerative farming, permaculture, climate. I've worked with, I've been in my business. I help individuals and businesses to reach success, to reach their goals, and to be at their best. And so I know a lot of what it takes to reach the goals that we're talking about tonight. And one goal in particular that I have that I'm really passionate about is moving our city operations to net zero by 2025 and community-wide by 2030. Of really, you know, we have such an intelligent, compassionate group of people here in this community, and there is no reason why we can't be a model for other communities for how to lead with compassion and kindness and for how to be a leader in climate action. So thank you very much. I really want to be the representative of this community, and I want to serve.
Thank you. Allison.
Thank you, and thank you for coming, and thanks for moderating, et cetera. In closing, I'd like to speak about my experience in municipal government. If anything, I've learned how important experience is. But before I do that, I just want to say that I would be pleased and proud to serve with any of these candidates. I mean, the idea is, I'm like, I have them written down here. I have, you know, it's just been an amazing learning experience for me. But I did want to let you know about my experience because I think municipal government experience at this point for Ojai is going to be really important. So I have, in the past 10 years, I served on my town council. I focused on housing and budget, roads, and schools. I was also an ad hoc member of the planning board. I served, excuse me, I served on our regional school board and was chair of the education subcommittee. I sat on the executive board of a 26-town cooperative in Western Massachusetts, creating one of the largest municipally-owned fiber networks broadband in the country. I also managed a National Science Foundation grant researching science communication to the layperson. So I think it's particularly important. My background is in science, and that means that my decisions will be based on data, facts, and best available information, not my personal preferences, opinions, or politics, although those will certainly play to the point that they do. But we can't afford anything less. So a vote for me is a vote for a livable Ojai now and for the future of all of us. So thank you very much, and I hope to see you at city council meeting on the other side. Good night.
All right, thank you. Michelle, thank you very much.
Hi. Thank you so much to everyone who made it out here, to our moderators, to the candidates. I just, I want to say I may not look like you or have the same lived experiences as you, or I might be in a different stage in my life as some of you here. But I want you to know that that doesn't mean I'm not rooting for you. And I can promise you that if I am elected to this position, that your concerns and the challenges that you face are not going to be... They're not going to fall on deaf ears. My opponent says experience matters, and I couldn't agree more. But I think we need to go beyond platitudes and ask ourselves, what kind of experience actually matters to making our community not just livable but prosperous? And my vision for Ojai is an Ojai that is vibrant, that is vital, and that creatively capitalizes on the combination of natural beauty, our extraordinary residents, and community heritage to evolve and adapt so that in 30 years, my daughter can be standing where I am here today as proud and passionate to call Ojai home as I am. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, audience, everyone who's come out. We will be streaming, I mean, this event was recorded, and we will get it on our Ojai Valley News platforms. Andy, you want to talk about where they can find it?
Yeah, I was just going to say, if you have questions that we didn't get to, ohichat@gmail.com, email those questions. We'll post it on the discussion forum, and all of the candidates will have access to answer if they wish. But also, questions can go into the paper, and the candidates also respond there too. So keep the conversation going.
Yeah, I want to encourage you all to send letters to the editor. 350 words is the easiest so they don't get kicked back to you. But please, please send them to letters@ojivalynews.com and share your thoughts and opinions there. It's a good platform, in my opinion. So thank you.
Thank you all for being here, and thanks to the candidates.